Call meeting in order, the regular board meeting of Ames Community College. And I think, let's see, yes, we do have an agenda or a quorum rather. I'm trying to run two at a time here. So before I go to the, onto the next meeting, I'm going to ask, I make sure everybody noticed the addition to the action items. So, but of action item six, the presentation by trustee Peterson on the distinguished fellow award. So just so everybody's aware of that. With that, I'll ask for an approval of the agenda.
I so moved that it should be approved, the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Thank you, trustee Hou. And because we're doing virtual meeting, I'll have to ask for a roll call vote on each item that we vote on. So could you, we have a motion and a second. Could you go ahead and hold that roll call vote? Carrie?
Yes, trustee Hou. Trustee Peterson. I don't think he's been able to join us quite yet. We'll move on to trustee Wendell.
Yeah, I.
And Chair Oxiger.
I, okay, we, we have the agenda approved. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of the February 10th, 2021 district board meeting?
I would so move that we approve every tense meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And I second that motion.
And we have a second. Did we have a roll call vote? Carrie?
Yes, trustee Hou.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson. Trustee Wendell.
I.
And Chair Oxiger.
I. Okay, next is public comment. Typically have, the general public is invited to speak to the Board of Trustees in their regular face-to-face meeting. Because we're doing it virtual, we ask that you send your comments to the email address listed on the agenda, the Board of Trustees at aims.edu. Those are reviewed. And if there are any comments, they're brought up the next meeting. So if you could help us there, or anybody has any comments, we'd appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a presentation from guests and representatives to the board. And I would ask Shannon McCaslin to join us for this wonderful event.
Hello, good afternoon on this beautiful afternoon, Board of Trustees. Can you hear me? Are we doing okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Since we normally meet on the Fort Lepton campus for the March meeting, I thought it would be appropriate to introduce you to one of our remarkable students enrolled in a program that's based on the Fort Lepton campus. In fact, this student's academic achievements and reputation actually preceded my even meeting her when I received a glowing recommendation about her from agricultural professor Amy McFarland, who I think is here in the audience today. So today I had the good fortune of introducing you to Jody Lieben. While in high school in 1992, her journey to Ames actually began. And as happens in life, the long and winding road brought her back to us in 2017, four kiddos and a lot of life later. As you saw in your board packet, you, you probably saw that Jody is working on a degree with designation in animal science here at the college with the goal of transferring to CSU and gaining entrance into the veterinary science program. Jody plans to connect her degree to her passion, as you will hear about in a moment. So I introduce you to the remarkable Jody Lieben, who I think probably has her camera and mic on at this point. Hello, Jody.
Making me blush. Thank you, Dr. Bornstein and board. Thank you for hearing me. I'm a Loveland native. I've been married for 26 years. I have four boys, ages 15 to 23. I have a grandson who's five years old. My second son is a Navy CB. So life has been very busy. I've always wanted to go to college. I've just, I've always had excuses, you know, life. I guess when one excuse will do, I picked them all, you know, from money to kids to time, but really it was fear. I talked myself out of it time and time again. But I've worked with animals my whole life and that's been my passion. And I always knew that I wanted to do something with that. But again, be it grooming or working with a vet, rescue work, right now I do rescue work. I actually foster dogs and I specialize in pregnant dogs and training puppies because I'm a little crazy. My goal is to become a veterinarian ultimately. And I would love to open up my own rescue and training center and work with strays and a lot of the stuff that we get from down south. Really Ames just made it possible for me. I, you guys took away all of my excuses. You made it affordable, flexible. It mean, there was, I had no more excuses. I kind of had to act on it. And then I met some amazing teachers like Amy McFarland. Oh my gosh, I love her. She just built up my confidence. She had this way of just believing in me and making me believe that I could do it, that I could succeed. And she just teaches in such an understandable way that I realized, hey, maybe through Ames, I can actually do this and succeed. So here I am. And I appreciate you guys listening to my short little story. Obviously, 46 years can't really be condensed to five minutes, but I do appreciate Ames and all that it's had to offer for me and taking away all of my excuses and making it possible for me to succeed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Well, thank you, Jody. It was wonderful hearing from you. Normally, Dr. B would do a presentation, but I, I think that that may have to happen at another time. So.
So Jody, we'll, we'll just mail you a little sort of thank you for taking time to share your story. That's what Chair Oxiger is referring to. And, and we want to thank you. The little thank you gift is basically to thank you for taking your time to share your story with us. And we always like to have a student or an alumni story at every board meeting to remind us of why we do what we do. So thank you so much, truly for telling us that you, like many other students, there are fears, there are, I think you call them excuses. But that it was great to hear that we removed those barriers for you so that there wasn't any excuses anymore. So that's wonderful to hear. And thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And, and thank you for choosing Ames. And congratulations. I look forward to at some point seeing you at commencement. So that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jody. Appreciate you joining us and hope to meet you in person one day. Next on the agenda, Representatives to the Board, Student Government Association, Alicia.
Hi, good afternoon. Hey, everyone here?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Board, and good afternoon. Starting with the government, Student Government Association, Vice President of SAES, Sky Patine, and Vice President of Academic Affairs, Ashley Edson, have made great progress with our textbook and classroom material initiative. They are collaborating with Chuck Jensen and Allison Easley to discuss the challenges of student educational expenses during the pandemic and elaborating on the use of OER, which is the online education resources. I'm excited to announce that our student parent affinity group is finally underway. And I am planning for the first meeting to be shortly after spring break. With also a connection to the affinity group, I was excited to work with Rebecca Herman today on our student parent U focus workshop, which went good. Our guest speaker was Sarah Waldridge from Project Self-Efficiency, which helps with single student parents be more prepared during and after college to have a more successful future. Next with our campus activities programmers, they have been working really hard on events for students and staff to enjoy. Yesterday, they hosted a virtual painting party, which all participants had a painting kit sent to their homes so that they could enjoy. And also when they joined together for a facilitated virtual guided painting activity. Also on March 31st, they are hosting a walkthrough, walkthrough, outdoor grad celebration for graduates coming in to have their picture taken for the virtual commencement ceremony. All student leaders are working really hard right now to make a difference with our students, even during these trying times. So thank you. And again, thanks for letting me speak.
Well, thank you for speaking as always. It's always good to hear from you. We appreciate it. Any questions of Alicia? If not, Ames Faculty Association, Brooke, are you with us today?
I certainly am. How are you? Good afternoon, Board members. I hope everybody is healthy and well. Good afternoon, Dr. B. I'm so happy to see your faces. All right. I'm here for the Ames Faculty Association, just to share a couple of accomplishments with you, although, let's be honest, the accomplishments these days are happening in Zoom meetings and in synchronous weird sessions and even on campus and asynchronous. And all of the faculty members are, it's been really kind of fun for, it's been difficult, but it's been really fun adding new engaging activities that can happen on Zoom, things like that. So a lot of that is going on right now. I also have some publications, exhibits, things like that. Our instructor of art, Dan Augustin, go figure, I bring him up a lot. He has another exhibit. It is entitled The One-Man Art Show and it is at the Loveland Museum Gallery. That's happening right now. We have Professor of Psychology Pamela Lundberg. She is, also has a nutrition background. And she just wrote an article for the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health International. So this, it was a big, big paper for hers. It's entitled GMO Food Labels Do Not Affect College Student Food Selection. So that has just been published just this last month. Moving forward to a conference and some workshops here, we all had the two by two again, I'm, we've brought that up where we meet with the whole state within our disciplines and make sure that we are doing all of the things that the state needs us to do at all of our colleges. So we just had that conference last month. And then I don't normally talk about things that I was included in, but this one, there were others with me. So, okay. There, there was an HLC workshop that was attended by and completed by myself and Professor of Math, Meha Daruka. We have Professor of Psychology, Francie Rotini, and Instructor of World Languages, Lucille Lund. We attended the Online Learning Consortium Workshop through the HLC entitled Strategies For Facilitating Live Online Sessions. So it was a three-day-long workshop and what it was, was all about engaging students in a Zoom session, which can be harder to do than in a face-to-face, right? They can just turn their camera off and not participate. So it was some ideas of that. And let me tell you, Ames is on top of it. This was from the HLC. And most of the things that we discussed, we're already doing at Ames. So there was not a whole lot of new material that was presented, just because Ames is so on top of, of the engagement in learner-centered teaching anyways. Although it was still a fantastic workshop. So that happened just recently. And the last thing I have for you today is Professor and Chair of the Graphic Design and Rich Media Department, Brian Dunning, is judging a TSA competition for high school students. It will be at Roosevelt High School for promotional design products. So let me like break that down for you, because I read that and I, that didn't make much sense to me. So the TSA is the Technology Student Association, and it's a national association of students, right? So technology-based students. And all over the country, they have these competitions in high schools. So Brian Dunning is going to go to the high school there and he is going to help with judging their promotional design area. They have animatronics, coding, cybersecurity, video production, all these different STEM and arts areas. Some of them are making flying things. I don't know, whatever. So in the technology area. So Brian Dunning is going to be participating in that. And he is also on the Advisory Board of the Roosevelt High School. And that is all I have for you today. Do you have any questions? All right. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Brooke. I was trying to get unmuted there. I apologize for me jumping around here, but I've lost half of my screen. I don't have agenda or anything up. So I'm working between two computers here. So, so thank you. Next is in Staff Association. Jen, you're up.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, members of the Board, Dr. B. It's always so nice to be here with you. And Chair Oxiger, I, I completely agree, life in technology times, right? Trying to manage all these screens and whatnot. I don't know about all of you, but I am very much enjoying this sunshine as I know what is potentially coming this weekend. So we're getting ready to hunker down here at home and I hope all of you have your stockpiles of hot chocolate and such. And Dr. Peterson, I hope the cattle stay safe out there. So I hope y'all stay, stay safe and warm this weekend. But so a little update for you on staff. Most staff are still working remotely. I think we have a few that are filtering back onto campus gradually. We have some departments that are doing some alternating of their schedules, but by, by and large, most everyone is still working remote and doing a great job making it through. I, you know, I hope that people are going to be able to take some time off over spring break and take a minute to breathe a little bit. I know I will. So. But nevertheless, staff are still doing great things. You have the ripples and recognition that's provided for in your board packet. Today, I wanted to just read a short little excerpt about our favorite Board of Trustees, IT guy, Matt Seawald. Actually, IT was mentioned a few times in the ripples for February. So, which I do think is very well deserved. Our IT folks, speaking of technology, they have gone above and beyond in helping us all continue to work remote and serve students and get our jobs done. So Matt was nominated by Azanet Rabregrez, and she is a bilingual pathway advisor. Azanet says, this is a very delayed thank you for Matt. There is no problem that Matt can't fix. When COVID happened, Matt was there helping me to set up my duo keychain so I could have access to help students while working from home. I arrived 10 minutes prior to the college closing and Matt was able to get the job done, helping me set up. Matt, thank you for helping me countless times. You and your team have been a great motor to keep things running smooth. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So thank you to Matt and the entire IT department for keeping us going. The second thing is, we have a staff accomplishment for community service. And as Shannon said, since we're normally on Fort Lepton, I thought that this was appropriate because it is about community service in the Fort Lepton area. Catherine Boker, I apologize if I messed her name up. She's a student counselor in Fort Lepton. Catherine's sister works for an organization called Wish of a Lifetime, which is an organization that is helping to change societal views of the elderly population by embracing age and all the wisdom that comes with it. This organization also grants wishes and dreams of the elderly population. And one of the annual things that they do is call it a cupid crew. And each Valentine's Day, volunteers will deliver roses to residents of senior housing or nursing facilities. However, due to COVID, rose delivery was unable to happen, but paper Valentines could be printed and hand-delivered by community members. So with the help of the Fort Lepton Executive Director Julie, Catherine was able to get in touch with the Housing Authority in Fort Lepton and asked if they could provide a similar service of printed-out Valentines to residents of senior housing or nursing facilities. In addition to really liking the Valentine's idea, the Housing Authority also mentioned that residents are always in need of general household items. So with the help of the Fort Lepton front office team and some of her personal friends, Catherine created Valentines for the residents and was able to raise over $500 to create 52 baskets of love for the residents, plus make a small donation back to Wish of a Lifetime. Each reusable basket contained oven mitts, kitchen towels, a coffee mug and some coffee. And the Housing Authority was so appreciative and grateful when the baskets were dropped off. And Catherine just says, I was so honored to be able to do something that could create some moments of joy for folks who have been drastically impacted by COVID and the isolation that came from it. And I'm so grateful for my Fort Lepton team who always jump on board when I approach them with ideas like this one. We have a really special group of people here on this campus and in this community, and I am so proud to be part of it. So congratulations, Catherine. That's a great service project. And thanks for getting Ames out there into the community. So that's all that I have for you today. I'll take any questions if there, if you have any.
Well, thank you. Any questions of Jen? None? Well, thank you, Jen, for a wonderful report as, as you always give. All right. Be safe out there. Next on the agenda, if I can find it here, action items, action item six, a five-year tuition strategy fiscal year 23 to 27, Chuck Jensen. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Bornstein. Yes, you do have before you action item six A, which is a five-year tuition strategy. Just a little recap of how we got here. Back in December, when I did my tuition workshop, had presented the concept of a, of a five-year strategy. And based on that conversation, the, the Board wanted some other information. And so we had the work session in February on talking about the strategy in a little more in-depth, with some more options. And also, of course, in February was the action item that approved tuition for fiscal year 22, which is, you know, a 0% increase for 2022. So anyway, I just wanted to give a quick recap of how we got to where we're at right now. So you have before you the strategy that, that we were presenting to get us to a 20% of our expenses by fiscal year 27. Again, you know, this is a long-term strategy. I mean, I know we've had a lot of conversation over the course of both the work sessions, both work sessions. So I won't, I won't go into a lot of details on that, but as we look at the current modeling right now, you know, that would have, that would bring in approximately $700,000 a year in additional tuition. Again, I want to reemphasize that this is just a strategy. You know, each year, the Board would still have the full action items coming before you. This just sets a, kind of sets us on a course of where we'd like to get within six years. And so with that, I'll leave that the, the administrative recommendation is to adopt the five-year strategy. And I will stand for any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, Chuck, is that 700,000 per year, every year?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be an additional 700,000 a year.
Second year would be 1.4 million.
Well, yeah, it accumulates, yeah, because tuition, tuition goes up each year. So it would be 700,000 a year accumulating, absolutely.
Okay, so in, in the third year, we'd be increasing tuition from zero to 2.1 million, am I correct?
Yeah, based on the current modeling, absolutely, yeah.
And then 2.8 million. What percentage presently is tuition of our $80 million budget?
Right now, it is, let me grab my.
11%?
Yes, it is currently right now for fiscal year 21, it is 11%.
11%. And we have about an $80 million budget, am I correct?
Yes.
And so it costs us, how many students did we have this year?
I, I don't have enrollment numbers at my.
Last time we did this, I kind of, I'm just, you know, I spend about $80,000 to $9,000 per student, if you look at our overall budget versus the number of students in the wall. Now that, that's full-time equivalent. That's everybody. So it's part-time students and everything. So that's what I think, a fair number. And then what we're charging for tuition is roughly 11%. You want to move it up over a gradual period of time. And do we, do we have any assumptions post-COVID, or is this just in anticipating some of those things?
This is based on my.
Can't chase right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last piece. I'm sorry.
Can't chase right now. Post-COVID. Where our enrollments are going to be and whatnot.
Yeah, this, this modeling is based off of pre-pandemic enrollment.
Okay.
That ultimately, you know, it's, it's a, again, you know, as we had no tuition increase for fiscal year 22, you know, hopeful in 23, 24, 25 and 26 that, you know, we continue to see a recovery of our enrollment. And so that's, that's the basis for the modeling that I used for these numbers.
I guess, you know, I'm just kind of, the last time we discussed this at the work session, there was, is there ways that we can, you know, we, we always have action items that we spend a little bit more, but always looking for ways that we can value engineer our spending habits. And that's a creative word, phrase of words there.
Yes, you know, those are conversations that we have in budget assumptions and then our budget worksheet, our budget work session. And, and, and so, yeah, I mean, we're, we're always looking for efficiencies. I mean, that's, that's something that a campus continues to do. And so, yeah, I, I guess to answer your question very simply, yes, I mean, we're always have that at the forefront of our mind of how to maintain our budgets, what's appropriate, what we need to adequately serve our students. So again, those are, you know, conversations for our budget work sessions. But again, Twitter dies into that.
Chuck, I, I'd like to make a comment. Number one, if I remember us talking about this in December, that this strategy over five years, we're still maintaining, I think, being one of the, the best kept secrets in the state as far as tuition. I think we're still one of the lowest compared to CMC. And then the other thing I'm looking at or thinking of, if this increases 700,000 per year, DHR just proposed X amount of increases, right, for the, the 2.5% cost of living increase, this would at least cover that. So it seems to me, and this is just me, it's almost a a no-brainer that we should approve this strategy. I mean, I, I guess every year we have to approve it. But it seems to me that if, if we're going to be competitive in the arena, that we need to start going up a little bit, yet keeping it low enough that we still have that marketability, that we are a good community college with a good tuition rate. And I think it's a win-win, actually.
No, thank you, trustee Wendell. I appreciate the comment, yes, and the conversation during the work session, that even with this proposed strategy, if we were to enact what's being proposed, yes, we would still be maintaining a cost advantage in the state.
Any other questions for Mr. Jensen? I just want to say I appreciate all that you put into this. And, you know, we get these reports from, from Dee and all the other departments and everything. You know, so appreciate the fact that how you all work together and work closely and, and you keep tabs on each other. So I guess having been here a while, I guess it's no surprise that those things balance out. You've all considered what the other departments are doing. And it's a, it's a, what I would call is an old farmer, a well-oiled machine. I think it's working very, very well. So I thank you for all that. So again, any other questions of Mr. Jensen? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve action item 6A.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can. Welcome, Ray.
Okay, yeah, well, barely.
Okay, yeah, well, barely. I would move, I would move that we approve action item six A.
Thank you for that, sir.
I would second that motion.
Okay, and thank you for the second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve action item six A. And I'll ask Carrie to do a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Trustee Howe.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Wendell.
Hi.
And Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Action item six B. Appointment of Board of Trustees Liaison is designated election official, and Dr. Bornstein, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So on the years that we have an election, we need to, the board needs to designate an election official. The summary is in your packet, per Colorado Revised Statute twenty-three dash seventy-one dash one-ten. Five members of the Board of Trustees shall be elected at the regular biennial school election of school districts within the local college district. Any person desiring to be a candidate for the Office of Trustees shall file a petition for nomin- nomination pursuant to CRS Section one dash four dash eight oh three and Part Nine of Article Four of Title One. The election shall be conducted pursuant to provisions of CRS Articles one to thirteen of Title One. And the Secretary of the Board of Trustees shall be the designated election official responsible for the election. Per Ames College Policy Twelve, Board Officer Elections and Responsibilities Number Two, any of the special duties of the Board's secretary may be delegated by the Board to a paid secretary, who may be apport- appointed by the Board, and that's also Colorado Revised Statute twenty-three dash seventy-one dash one-twenty-five. Designation of Election Official regularly takes place at our board meetings in March during the odd number election years, and here we are. So it is our administrative recommendation to move to approve appointment of Carrie Schaefer Randolph as a designated election official for the November two, twenty-twenty-one board elections.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions of Dr. Bornstein? Okay, hearing none, I would ask for a motion on action item six, which one is it? B.
Six B. I, I move that we approve action item six B and have Ms. Carrie be our representative. And just quickly, I was hoping she was going to be the person because she's so efficient.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Dr. Peterson, we have a motion, we have a second. And Carrie, would you ask for a roll call vote, please?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you, Trustee Windell. I feel like I'm giving myself more work here, but so the roll call vote, Trustee Howe.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Wendell.
Hi.
And Chair Oxiger.
Absolutely, I. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Carrie, for accepting those responsibilities for such, doing such a fantastic job. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next action item, action item six C. Policy three dash three hundred procurement and contracts revision. Mr. Jensen, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. Yes, you have a, a head, running you agenda item, action item six C. And again, this is part of our annual or ongoing policy and procedure review. And so the policy that you have before you is the update of the procurement and contracting policy. As you can see in the, in the highlighted language, it's been updated with some current language and removing some procedures that don't currently happen or haven't been part of our process and renames it administrative services, procurement and contracts. And it also, along with the policy, all the procedures have been reviewed too. So this is an extensive, extensive review done by, done by our purchasing office and our, and our controllers office. And so you have before you policy two oh four, or I guess it'd be policy three oh three being renamed to policy two oh four. Administrative recommendation is to, to approve revisions to the policy.
Any questions of Chuck?
Yeah, what's the basic change in this? I'm trying to.
Did you hear the question, Chuck?
The basic change in it, updating administrative services and procurement, you know, adding procurement to the name, giving a little more, a little more current description of what a contract is. And then the, the two sentences there, authorizing the president, that remains the same. And then that section that's crossed out is being removed.
So there's, so I guess it says subject to monetary limit. Is that, that's no longer be part of the policy, am I correct?
That'd be part of the procedures.
That would be, there is, there is a procedure for monetary limits?
Yes.
Okay.
It dictates, you know, when we, when we can purchase up to, when we go out for quotes, and then when we actually have to go out for formal bid.
Chuck, I do have a question, and this is because I'm still learning. I thought I knew quite a bit, but I'm still learning. What would be a typical contractual obligation that Dr. B would do on behalf of the board? Can you give me an example?
Oh, it's, that actually refers to any service contract. A good example would be our contract for our custodial service.
Custodial service, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that would be example of a contractual obligation that the board, the president is delegated with the authority from the board and follow through the procedures there. So something like that would be bid out. And then, and then the contractual obligation would be created.
So Dr. B can definitely do all that stuff, so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Chuck, or at least to clarify, I, I think what I see, and, and I think this is what Trustee Howe was referring to, to what is crossed out would really end up being in the procedure. Is that correct?
The monetary limits established by institutional procedures, that's our, that's our processes of when we bid, when we go out for RFP. Then the second part of that is, there had been a, a comment back when of from the business office, shall prepare a report for all contractual obligations entered into the college at least twice during each fiscal year. And the report shall be submitted by the board at either a regular, to the board at a regular meeting or a special meeting. That's, that's not a practice that we have followed for many, many years, and so that's why that's being removed.
Okay, I guess, I guess I wondered, because again, Trustee Howe, I think questioned the subject to monetary limits established by inter-institutional procedures. That seems quite a statement to eliminate.
And that's, it is reflected in the attached procedures that spell out again, what, what are, what our procedures are for different values of purchasing. And so that is still contained in procedures and that's dictated. That's how, that's how we operate as far as any bidding of our contracts or, or procuring any service.
Okay.
So was this redundant then?
Yeah, that's, yeah. That's, the procedure establishes that, and so it was, that first sentence was redundant. We felt. And then again, the procedures are made out with all the details.
Okay. Heidi is trying to get in here, and then I'll get to you, sir.
I, I understand what Dr. Peterson is saying and, and Trustee Howe. And maybe, I don't know if we can, can we put this action item off until next month? And you could show us this same screen along with the, the procedure that is duplicating? Does that make sense? So we could see it side by side and say, oh, I definitely can, I can see the duplication. Is, is that? Would that be okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I guess, just declare, I, I, I'm okay with putting it off. It's not going to stop anything that's occurring anyways. Because I, part of this, I, from my understanding, Chuck, you're not even paying, you're not even following that policy or procedure, whatever it is. That way, as far as reporting to us or doing things like that.
Yeah, that's, that's the part that we're moving, that it hasn't been practiced for many, many years. And so that's why that's being recommended to be taken out that last, that last two sentences.
My understanding is once we approve the budget, we don't sit there and line item you while you can't spend five hundred thousand here, you can't spend two million there. You gotta come to us with every, which, which would be ridiculous, but, because we don't want to do that. But you're kind of streamlining the statement, am I correct with that?
I think that's a good way of saying it, that it, it streamlines it. And again, you know, along with that, all the procedures were updated and revised too. And so if there's questions about monetary limits, I mean, you know, we, they're contained in the, in the procurement procedures that we could go into in a little more depth in a, in a future meeting if you so would like to.
We have any, but.
Now, if I can throw a. Another option as well as tabling this is to put that, actually put that phrase back in. And it would read, enter into contractual obligations on behalf of the board, comma, subject to monetary limits established by institutional procedures, period. And then remove the rest of those two sentences. It's redundant, but, but it's, it doesn't, it's not hurting anything. It's basically stating it in policy and then it's shown in procedure. So that could be another way to move forward if you wanted to move forward at this moment, if that's the, if that's the sticking point.
Can I just, is it really essential, this is Ray, essential that we pass this today? Could be laid over until next meeting and
Sure.
like Heidi suggested, let's see what the, just for the sake of our own edification as to what the procedures are that go with this. In fact, I'm, I guess I'm surprised that we don't have the procedures. That seems like what we've had in the past is that we have a policy and then we also see the procedures that, that go with it.
So just for a point of clarification, certainly when you're, when the board is reviewing a board policy, anything that's a number of zero to one hundred, that is the board's, the board owns those policies, if you will, has control and direction for those policies. Then the board also sets procedures for those. The college policies, if you will, that are numbered from like one oh one all the way up to whatever, five hundred and something. The board still must approve policy. However, the procedures that are attached to those are internal, because they changed, many of them change very often. So they don't come to the board. So that is where sometimes you see a policy with a procedure and those are board-owned. And sometimes you do not see a procedure because those are college operations. That helps to clarify. This is college operations, but the board still needs to act on the policy.
Okay.
And I appreciate your, your comment, Dr. Bornstein, about perhaps adding that last sentence back of referencing the, the limits that we have. And I mean, you know, very quickly, you know, anything over twenty-five thousand on a commodity is a formal, requires a formal bid or a sole source justification. And then anything over, for services, it's over fifty thousand, and for building constructions, over a hundred thousand, it requires formal bids. Anything under five thousand are purchasable by a department. And then between five and twenty-five, that's where we have document sheets and we require, you know, different three bids, things like that between. So it's, that's the monetary limits, if, if, if you want to know specifically where we take different actions on procurements.
Yeah.
Heidi, did you have something?
I understand what Mr. Jensen's saying. I like what Dr. B has said, just to leave that one subject to monetary limit established by institutional procedures in, and then the rest be taken out. And I think could be approved by me. I would be okay with that.
You know, monetary limits, we don't, we're not aware of those, really. I'm sure there's a, you just explained them to set. When you get into six-figure numbers, there's probably a stopgap that occurs, isn't there?
There has to be, yeah.
You know, that somebody.
Accountability measures. Yeah, and checks and, checks and balances, yep.
You know, that's got to have either, you know, a vice president or, you know, somebody else, right?
Many, many signatories.
Yeah, that actually, that's actually addressed in the, in the policy too, is signature authority. Making it very simple, cabinet members have up to a hundred thousand and anything over a hundred thousand requires the president's signature. I mean, that's probably as, as simple as I can say that level of authority that people approve, signature authority.
Well, then from here.
Layers, many layers of, you know, that's many layers up, you know, there's departmental approvals, there's division approvals. And then ultimately, vice president or cabinet approval. And then I said, again, anything over a hundred thousand, then act goes to the president for her approval also.
Okay. So we can, we can never entertain a motion to change the wording, as Dr. Bornstein has suggested. Everybody kind of seems to be okay with that, or we can set this aside and we can ask to see the, the wording of the two different the policy and the procedure side by side, if you would rather do that. So it's, yeah.
I mean, built within, excuse me, Chairman, you know, built within the, the action item or the procedure, the policy, all those hyperlinks are there to the procedures. So, you know, at any time, board members can go out and look at procedures. Because they're all attached, are, are, are subordinate to the policy on our policy and procedures website. So though, that information is readily available if a board member wanted to dive into a little deeper of what I was describing very quickly.
Sure.
That's the eighty-two million dollar rabbit hole.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I would move that we do amend the policy as Dr. B has suggested to reinstate that, that part of the sentence that was there before.
I will second that.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second on action item six C to amend the wording as Dr. B has suggested to, in, we retain the part about the, I don't even remember what it was, the accountability and eliminate the last part of the sentence.
Right, that's correct.
The wording to be added would be subject to a monetary limit established by institutional procedures. That, that's a portion that we added back.
Okay.
The procedure or policy.
So that's our motion. So I'll call for a roll call vote and we'll see where it goes from there.
Trustee Howe.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Wendell.
Hi.
And Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Okay, Mr. Jensen, are you good with that?
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate the board's comments and. I appreciate the board's comments and Dr. B's, Dr. Bernstein's comment. So that's how we'll, we'll move that forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, action item six D.
Hey, wait, whoa, 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 we, don't we have to vote on the policy on the action item now? We just amended it.
Well, I thought that was the motion.
Well, I thought the motion was just to amend, but that's what I intended, but if that, if that takes care of it, then fine. So.
Well, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with the way it is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Peterson.
Yeah.
Okay, next item. Six D, 2021 distinguished fellow award. And Dr. Peterson, you're up, sir.
Okay, let's give it a shot. As all of, most of you know, you know, it's not that time of the year where we're looking for the distinguished service fellow to make an award. I was volunteered to, to be on the committee that makes you selection. And we met oh shoot, I don't remember exactly the date now, but we met and, and did discuss the nominations, nominees that were put before us. And I will say right up front that we had several very good, very good nominations. Certainly worthy of the distinguished fellow award. And to remind you, the committee who worked on this was one member of the Ames Foundation, one member of the president's cabinet, a member of the Ames facility, a member of the Ames staff, and then a student, and a student member and a member of the college council. So there were what, one, two, three, four, six, seven. It got together and the decision was unanimous. There was no controversy at all in selecting the person that was selected. So I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve action item, whatever it is now.
Six D.
Six, six, six D. And confirm Carol Ruckel as the 2021 distinguished fellow. And you have it before you, but to remind you, you know, Carol served on the board of trustees for eight years. She was a absolutely very regular attendee. I don't think she ever missed a board meeting. She was always upfront with what was going on. She was well prepared and and as far as I'm concerned and without hesitation, I would say she is certainly worthy of this award. So I renew my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the selection of Carol Ruckel as distinguished fellow. We have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, Carrie, if you would do a roll call vote.
Yes. Trustee Hou.
Hi.
Trustee Peterson.
Hi.
Trustee Wendell.
Hi.
And Chair Oxiger.
Hi. Okay, motion carries and we will give Carol Ruckel a call and we will congratulate her with the heartfelt thanks of the college and the board of trustees and congratulate her on being chosen as distinguished fellow. I'm still not sure when that actual award will be presented. Dr. B, can you enlighten us? I think you mentioned it the other day, but I'm not sure I remember in that conversation exactly what it was.
Yeah, so the distinguished fellow award is awarded during commencement. And this year's commencement is actually virtual commencement. And the recordings for all the sections of commencement are occurring in April. So once you call Carol and congratulate her and let her know that she's been selected, then the college can put in, in gear, scheduling the time for recording so that she's presented the award and it's recorded. And then it will be assembled professionally into the commencement program, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you for that. So congratulations, Carol, and moving on. Information items, junior retreat topics. I would ask all of you to, if you have any topics that you would like to be discussed at the retreat, please let us know as soon as possible, within the next two weeks. We need to contact Dr. Pam Fisher, who will be facilitating this. And depending on the topics presented, see what she will be involved in. And that will help us determine whether we do a one or two day retreat. And she usually schedules two to three months out. So it's imperative that we get those topics in as soon as possible so we can go ahead and get her booked and get that process in motion. So if you would do that, it would be appreciated. Next is the board calendar. Make sure you check your board calendar coming up March 31st. We have the tour of the welcome center for the board of trustees and the foundation board. That is at two o'clock again on March 31st. Look forward to that, that should be an exciting, they're hoping to get us up on the third floor. So then April 14th, the courses are board of trustees meeting. And that will change to a hybrid meeting. That'll be a 1:30 and we're going to try to move back to a hybrid in hopes of moving back to in person in the near future. So those are the information items that I want to call your attention to. Any questions? Okay, next on the agenda is the president's report and I'll turn that over to Dr. Bornstein. Thank you.
Thank you. So first and um, your agenda is updates and highlights from our executive vice president and chief academic officer, Dr. Russ Rothamer. And he is on screen and unmuted. So there we go.
Good afternoon, thank you, Dr. Bornstein. Quick sound check, can you hear me okay? Thank you. Chair Oxiger, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to share some highlights with you this afternoon. And I do have two very quick highlights for you from the small packet we presented in your board packet. The first one is a little bit more in depth and kind of coincides very nicely with your work session and what Dee Schultz shared with you about our overall resources and compensation. And it's on our second page under allied health and wellness. As you know, as you talked a little bit about in your work session, the physical education and recreation department is a significant component of the tools and resources that the college provides to all of us for our self-care journeys. And Chair Oxiger, as you mentioned during the work session, these kinds of resources are absolutely integral to our success and to our health more so now than ever. So very proud of what this team has done and wanted to just highlight a couple of things. Certainly not all of them that are in your packet, but what our employees and students have available to them. Each day, there's the daily dose of fitness, which is a virtual fitness class from home that you can take. That's Mondays through Thursday at noon. In addition, on Tuesday and Thursday from 12 to 12:45, there's gentle yoga and Reiki meditation. And one of the other things that's available, and this is really where I wanted to highlight, you know, all the, the different college resources that come together in addition to the perk staff. And that's, that the perk has been open for quite some time and we've been monitoring attendance by hour each day that it's open. And so for general use for our students and employees, it's open Monday through Friday from 5:30 to nine. And then on Saturdays from eight till noon. And they've really taken a lot of work, not only with the perk staff and facilities to ensure the cleaning and really monitoring the safety protocols to make sure that as individuals go into the perk to use it, that it is safe. And one of the things that is the, the final link I want to mention to you, that's in your packet under this section of our update, is the positive press that the perk received at the end of February that was in the Greeley Tribune. So if you had not had a chance to see that as of yet, it really not only highlights an individual's journey in terms of health and wellness, but it really highlights what we have available to us and what amazing facilities that we have at Ames, especially our perk that we have enjoyed access to. And the second and final thing I wanted to highlight from your packet is another area which we are extremely proud of the work that our teams have done in bringing something very significant to Northern Colorado. And that's Ames is working to host the US poet laureate. And it's Joe Harjo, and she'll be doing a pair of presentations at the Rialto Theater in Loveland. And Harjo is the 23rd poet laureate of the United States. And she is the first Native American to hold that position. And we're very excited and I wanted to certainly recognize the work that Evan Oakley has done as he co-chairs that event. And Evan is our chairperson of our English department. And he has worked very closely with the Loveland poet laureate program as well as our Ames sale team. And the sale team is the student activities, inclusion and leadership team, also with the student government association. So again, a great partnership across the institution to bring a phenomenal culturally event to Northern Colorado. And those dates are in your packet. The first event is Friday, April 9th at 7:00 PM. So certainly if you have any requests for additional information, we can provide that to you. But wanted to thank everyone who's been involved in that and just sharing the great opportunity that both of these things that I've highlighted for us at Ames and Northern Colorado. And with that, Dr. Bornstein, that would conclude my highlights of my report.
Super. It looks like Chair Oxiger may have stepped away. Are there any questions for Dr. Rothamer?
No. I, I do, I would really like to, if I could, attend the US poet laureate. I would love to see them. Do I just contact the theater?
Actually, Carrie will go ahead and collect that information, how many tickets you want. And so Carrie will be the, the pivot person, if you will, for your interest and dates and how many tickets and those kinds of things.
Congratulations. That's great, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Hou, did you have your hand up?
Oh, off subject, I guess, kind of, do we have any updates on enrollment or where we're at versus?
Russ, go for it.
I I did not bring any of that information with me and Dr. Weiskaver may have it. So we'll let her address it either in her report or we will.
Hi, I think I can, Dr. Rothmer, just maybe support you a little bit in this moment. I would just share, you know, enrollment. We're still, we're kind of holding steady at that 10% being down. One of the ways that Dr. Rothmer and I and our executive director of IRNA have been talking about this is the COVID factor. And we're seeing that across the state, across the nation. You know, when we look at what that means potentially for FTE, we're seeing FTE a little bit further down than we are headcount. And the only reason we're seeing that specifically is because we're noticing that folks are taking fewer courses. So we have maybe not as heavy as a drop in students, but folks are taking fewer courses, which makes sense, right? If we think about folks are trying to work more and have additional responsibilities. So really exciting work partnership between Dr. Rothmer, Mr. Jensen, Mr. McFarland and myself is some work around enrollment recovery that we'll be excited to share with the board next month. Most likely, maybe in May, depending on when we hear from the federal government. But I think it will put, give, put the board at ease a little bit. Knowing all of the working that's happening behind the background right now, we're still doing a lot of planning. But in comparison to where folks were across the state a year ago and where we were a year ago, we're kind of even with where they were. So I don't know if that makes sense, but certainly I don't know that, I don't feel overly concerned. I don't, but of course we want to, we want to see enrollment going the other direction. I know that's not exact numbers for you, but I think maybe helps you, give you a bird's eye.
Sarah, is concurrent following that same trend as far as in the high schools?
Well, yeah, and, and we're seeing that with concurrent also, you know, concurrent is one of our strongest facets of, of our kind of enrollment portfolio. And so we're seeing that high schools are really struggling because they are also doing hybrid, remote, those sorts of things. And so to even get their high school courses in, it was a little bit difficult. They had some timing issues and connection issues around concurrent enrollments across the state. This is how COVID has impacted. So, so I would say, you know, across all of our areas, we're not seeing, I'm going to use this term and I'll be careful about it. We're not seeing a sig, a statistically significant drop in any one of our populations. And that's important. So statistically significant, significant means if we run a whole bunch of statistical tests and we can get it to where we're comparing apples to apples, we're not seeing a significant difference between any of our populations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weiskaver. Any other questions for Dr. Rothamer and his report? Okay, thank you, Russ, appreciate it. Next is Mr. Jensen would like to give some highlights on administrative services and our monthly budget update. And Chuck is on screen and unmuted.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you the budget update as of January 31st, 2021. This is fiscal year 21. As, as I've reported in the past months, things continue to be on track. I, I don't have any, anything to alert the board to as far as any significant differences in, in revenue or expenditures. We continue to be very solid for fiscal year 21. And, and for trustee Wendell's benefit next month at the April meeting is when I have the budget work session. And then, so that's a very in-depth conversation about looking, looking to fiscal year 22. And then of course, that then comes to the board in May for action items. So again, just to kind of a, how the next couple of months roll. So yeah, this is, this is the budget office, busy time of the year, along with payroll or along with HR and budget. And so, so as far as the budget report as it is right now, 21 continues to come on track, is, is, is on track. And I'll stop there if there's any specific questions regarding fiscal year 21. If not, I have a couple other updates.
I have one, Chuck, real quick. The state appropriation, I know that's reflected or regarding the gaming revenue, is that correct?
Gaming revenues are included in that, yes.
Okay, and, and we're at 48% and last year we were at 85%. Is that because of the COVID and gaming?
It's the right, the timing of that, when we get the money from the state. And we anticipate, you know, the full, the full state.
Okay. Okay.
state amount by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so it's just timing. Thank you.
Without other questions, I'll just give a couple of other quick updates. We have received and accepted a cash offer for the sale of a hangar at three hundred ninety thousand. It goes to the airport board, May or March eighteenth for their right of first refusal. And based on their action, if they decide to match the offer, then they buy the hangar. And if not, we proceed with the buyer. And that would close on April nineteenth. So that's a a quick synopsis of where the hangar is going in the next two months. So one way or the other, it'll be off of our books soon. And just other quick, you know, as I think the board has a as a tour planned of the Welcome Center. I know Mike's very excited about having the board take that tour. I think you're going to be very excited. The construction continues to go on as scheduled. I hate taking Mike's thunder, but every once in a while I gotta say a couple of words about things, but the construction is going well and on target, on target. And so again, you'll be, I think you'll be very excited for that tour and we look forward to that. So that I'll, that's, that's the, that's the topics I wanted to bring up. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Chuck before we move on to Dr. Weiskaver?
Could I, could I ask Chuck? How about the Student Center? What's going on there? Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Doing well?
I should have mentioned the Student Center is, yes, they they begin to tear into that very quickly. And yeah, it's amazing what they can do in a short period of time when they open up a wall and bring in a skidster. They can make short order walls and stuff. And so that project has started on time. And also, I should have included that in saying about the Welcome Center. Both of those projects are on track and the weather's been very favorable. This weekend might change that for a little bit, but so far this year, they've been very fortunate with the weather. But yes, the student, student commons renovation is going well.
Good, good to hear.
Thank you, Chuck. And Dr. Weiskaver would like to give some highlights from the SACE Division, and she is on screen and unmuted.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Good afternoon, Dr. Bornstein. So can you believe, I know trustee Wendell can probably believe this because you're likely in your, your super busy season. But it's almost spring. Our students head into spring break starting next week. And so that's really exciting. Our MarCom Department and Dr. Bornstein have sent out some really important messaging around safety protocols for students and how to remember to to stay vigilant as we try to work our way through through COVID. And so really excited for that. I think students are really excited for that. I know my Ames student who's at home is very excited for spring break. So so that's kind of where students are. I want to give you just one quick operational highlight as as we move forward and then also talk to you a little bit about student leadership and leadership in general. So the Council for Equity and Inclusion is a group on campus that I have the honor and privilege of serving as campus sponsor for or cabinet sponsor for. And I've shared with you that one of our strategic plan tactics is to do a college climate survey. We're two weeks into the survey. We have two more weeks left. And I can share with you right now that as of last Friday, both our administrator and our staff groups have hit our goal of thirty percent or more. So our administrators, seventy-two percent of our administrators have responded to the survey. Thirty-seven percent of staff have responded to the survey. Eighteen percent of faculty have responded to the survey. So faculty and deans out there. If you have a chance, go ahead, pull out your phone right now and click on that little QR code on your video screen. It will take you to the survey that's on my picture. Also, students, we're having a lot lower response rate with students than we hoped. So we're really focusing on some messaging around getting the word out to students and encouraging them through different mechanisms. They have about a three point five response rate. So in total, we have six point eight percent. We have four hundred and fifty people who have filled out the survey. And and so we're really excited about that because this is going to tell us a lot about who we are and how we can move forward. Diversity has been and inclusion has been one of the topics over the last year. Regardless of of where we, where we fall. And I would argue through COVID, leadership has never been more important in our history. We need strong leaders to make difficult decisions to try to navigate multiple potential futures at the same time and try to find ways to make our friends, our colleagues, our peers make meaning of what illness was about or what change is about or what death has been about. As a group of leaders at Ames, we have certainly prototyped things, we've piloted things, we've pivoted from those prototypes and pilots. You know, we've done, we've done really turning on a dime. And I know that's what leaders across the nation are doing. And we've reminded each other that it's okay to be vulnerable. It's okay to to make a mistake, not hit the mark and keep trying and keep working toward it. And those core values of humility and vulnerability that we see in leaders are something that I think we're really starting to see in our Ames students who are working here on campus. In your packet, you have a list of different leaders, student leader groups on campus. And I wanted to share that with you because I wanted to help connect the work that you do to the work that students are doing so that we can see the ways in which many students across campus have traversed leadership through this difficult time. So our peer coaches, they talked about really having to remain nimble. You know, peer coach's job is to reach out to a student and and really try to help, help them, help the student understand how to do time management, how to organize their life. So, you know, family and friends understand school. So they've had to really adjust to literally working in the cloud with our students with this. Our peer navigators, you know, really are focused on being our concierge folks, our folks that help our students navigate. And they've had to help folks navigate in an online environment, which, as we all know, has been challenging. Our student ambassadors continue to support our advising team and help students answer questions about registration, about financial aid, about you know, different aspects of the technical registration parts of of enrolling at Ames. And of course, our amazing Campus Activities Board, student leaders, their worlds were turned upside down when they went from hosting massive programs outside to holding salsa dances via Zoom and then having the amazing idea of let's do drive-in movies. And on Halloween, we saw that like explode in the community. So they did some really great things. Our peer diversity specialists, you know, these are folks who are helping students who perhaps feel most marginalized on our community. And their leadership has grown over the last year. We have a hundred and fifty-four student employees. And that is that through support of everyone across campus, making sure that students are learning and earning money and and practicing what it is to be a professional in whatever field they may choose. Lastly, I'd like to share that the Ames chapter of Phi Theta Kappa has partnered with the institution on a two-year college project, which is focused on helping Ames become a hunger-free campus while keeping it, keeping in mind the importance of nutrition and psychology of food. So we'll continue over the next couple of years to hear great things about what they're doing. I think when we, when we think about COVID and enrollment and numbers, we know that those basic needs are critical to ensuring our students are successful. So as I wrap up my time today and kind of wax about leadership and and think about leaders, I want to thank the leaders in our life. So certainly want to thank you all, Board of Trustees, for your leadership over the last year and for modeling leadership for us. Also want to thank Dr. Bornstein for her leadership over the last year. It's been difficult and I'm really proud of where we are. You know, a year ago today at this board meeting, we came to you with a plan of what we were going to do for COVID. And in that moment, none of us knew what we were in for. But through, through those characteristics of humility and vulnerability and being willing to take risks, I think we've done a pretty good job of making our way through. And lastly, I'd like to thank my colleagues, both on the cabinet and throughout the college for helping support our students, for helping support me, for helping support you. Because I think that leadership has been so important to us and where we are as a community. So with that, I am happy to take any questions. I do have one quick clarification on enrollment that I have for trustee Hou. If you would like to hear that before or after we address questions.
Nicole.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so we have, I, our Executive Director of Institutional Research actually shared with me that by the time all the numbers came in, after we got all the students registered and we're through all the projects that are concurrent numbers are actually trending up versus trending down. So that's really exciting. So I just wanted to share that with you. And and that's helping us. We're hovering somewhere between eight and ten percent up. Again, a lot of that is just this isn't our census state. And so to give you a hard firm number is not a good idea because that number is going to keep changing as we move through. So I'd like to give you more of a ballpark there, but but it looks like I just wanted to correct myself for you so that we had a better understanding there.
So it's actually a little bit better than the average student.
The concurrent student, uh huh. Yes, that is correct. Which is great for our community. It's a great, that's great for our community.
How, how, what is the makeup of our concurrent enrollment? Is it in district or?
You know, we serve concurrent enrollment primarily in district. The majority of our students, I'm just gonna look at some data right here while I have this pulled up. You know, when we think about concurrent or high school students, as we call them, we kind of block them all into one group. So that can include concurrent and student, concurrent enrollment students, dual enrollment students, career academy students, ECA students. So it's really all over the board. We do work with some folks in the Loveland area through their school districts. We have some school districts we work through with Lermmer, but it's primarily, you know, all within what our service district is. And I recall about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, we pulled up some maps during a board meeting and we're, and we're trying to go, well, which concurrent high school is in our service district and not in our service district? So if it's helpful to you, I can go ahead and we can provide a list for you for that to give you a better idea. Trustee Hou, but that's really kind of what we're seeing is is from across the board, small little schools like Curzy and Eaton as well as District Six.
It's good to see that we have an outreach for our hottest areas or, you know, Lermmer County. We might talk them into a few tax dollars.
You know, I'll leave that to you and Dr. Bornstein.
Any other questions for Dr. Weiskaver?
Hey, yes, I would like to ask Dr. Weiskin, can you see any difference in the ethnic makeup of the student body? You know, with the pandemic and all of that, is there any change that you can see?
You know, as as I've worked on that, we're seeing, you know, as I shared before, we're seeing folks are down across the board. So enrollment is down across the board. We are seeing a slight shift up in our Latinx populations and and a little bit of dropping in our white or European population. So it's a different different kind of dynamic that's happening there, I think.
Right, right.
But again, comparing apples to apples when we run all of the fancy tests for significance and we get all apples to look like apples, we're not seeing a statistically significant difference in the change. And that's the part that we have to focus on. But it's exciting to see that our Latinx population is is rising at a higher rate than maybe our traditional students. Because that means our outreach is working and some of our work around diverse populations on the strategic plan under Strategy One is working also.
So does that mean headcount as well as FTEs or when you say there is a slight increase, are you, are you thinking of?
I'm speaking specifically of headcount. And if, and that's probably as far as I'll go in being able to provide detailed information without a more full report and kind of collaboration with Dr. Rothmer. So because I want to ensure that the information we provide you all is accurate. What I'm giving you right now is that general global perspective. So certainly can come back with that as we get closer to our withdrawal date where our numbers are a lot more solid and we can give you a better picture enrollment isn't as fluctuating as much.
Sure, I I understand that. I was just asking for sort of off the top of your head.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's exactly what you got. Yeah, yeah. Great question.
Trustee Wendell?
I had just have a comment, Sarah. I'm looking at the score card, I guess, and I am just over the moon amazed of how much virtual programs you have in order to support the students. I mean, it's all from interviews, from peer coaching. I mean, I'm just like, I went through the whole thing. I had time. And I'm just so impressed. I mean, I think that's why your numbers are not down. I mean, you've been supporting everyone in all these different areas and you've done a very, very good job. So congratulations.
Well, thank you. And for my team, my SACE team members on the call, please take that feedback. That means a lot coming from the Board of Trustees. And so we appreciate that. We've been working hard. And the team has done amazing things. So I I agree. The good job to the, to the folks who are putting together those programs. It's not easy.
Trustee Hou?
Yeah, I do like the new format that you put it in.
Yes, I do too.
Oh, good. I was hoping, we've been working on trying to make it more readable. So I'm glad that you appreciate that.
Hey, any other questions for Dr. Weiskaver? Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you all.
And it looks like that's I'm next. So in your packet, you have community meetings of note from February, from last board meeting to this board meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to respond to those before I move on with some other comments. Thank you. I saw clapping.
I'm good.
Okay, so as per usual, also on the next page, you see the new hires and and folks that are moving along. So again, for those of you who are in the audience, at some point when we are all together, we may just have anyone who was hired in the last year, please stand up so that we can certainly recognize you, welcome you appropriately and formally to Ames and and the board can put a name and a face together. So that's in the packet. Wanted you to know that. And just a that's in the packet. Wanted you to know that. And just a comment under President's Comments. So you heard a few folks today allude to some of the conversations that the cabinet really has been having about, okay, what is the next eighteen months bring? You know, we have this strategic plan that we're right in the middle of, right? We're actually ending our third year. And so we have two more years. And we know we have some real unique opportunities, and I say it that way purposely, with what we have been, are and will be continuing to move through, which is some really unique initiatives from the pandemic. So in short what the cabinet's been talking about is how, you know, how do we really focus the next eighteen months? And bring in many of the initiatives that are foundational from our strategic plan. So you heard Dr. Weiskew mention, or I believe it was Dr. Weiskew, mentioned that one area is certainly enrollment recovery. So we really looked or were identifying five umbrella areas, if you will, or pillar areas that we can not only bring some opportunity ideas, but also some initiatives from our strategic plan. So one of those certainly is enrollment recovery. We want to look the next eighteen months at how do we really move ourselves forward? And that, and we don't have any initiatives in there yet. I'm just kind of giving you right now the umbrella. We're going to be building those initiatives over the next few months, certainly based on input from Conversation Day, from across the college, from our strategic plan, from Good Practice, and also from what we have just seen that has really worked. And things that haven't worked that we don't want to do. So there's a lot to really debrief and digest. And we're going to take certainly the next year to do that and to focus on these areas. So one area, as you mentioned, is enrollment recovery. Another is revenue recovery. Virtual college or learn on demand, which you heard from Dr. Rothmer when he gave the academic master plan. There's, they were starting sort of in that direction, which is really offering many more courses and programs in a venue that allows our community members and our learners to have choices. I may want to take this class in person. I want to make, may want to take this class remote. I may want this one completely online. Not every course would necessarily have those choices, but to increase what we were doing pre You okay there, Ray?
Yeah, I think I'll make it.
All right. So enrollment recovery, revenue recovery, virtual college or learn on demand. We're not sure what we're talking about calling it yet. Certainly our technology, you know, we Ames is in a really good place technologically. And there are some things that we can get stronger. There's some things we can enhance, not only for our employees, but also for our learners. So what does that look like? And then finally, as you heard certainly from from Dee today, our mental health and wellness, not only for employees, but for our students. So again, the next eighteen months, we're really going to be focusing on those areas to to really bounce back, if you will, and get stronger. And if we remember that that's our purpose is to build a stronger community and that's what we, those are the areas we felt would do just that. Our internal community and our communities at large. So just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. You'll probably be hearing a lot more under those umbrella areas in the months to come. So that will just give you context for where we're chatting. Any questions before I hand it back over to Chair Oxiter? Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much, Dr. Bornstein, for all the information from you and your cabinet and the staff. Always wonderful information. Well received. Next on the agenda is comments from the board members. So who would like to kick it off? Thank you, Ray.
Okay. Gee whiz, I guess I volunteered, huh? Well, that's fine. And I apologize, everybody, for not being able to join you as as should have been, I guess, or or whatever. I, some reason, Zoom and my computer and me and the whole world don't get along, I guess, is what's going on. But I I have to say that I wanted to give a shout out because Jen, in her comments from the staff, talked about Matthew and how how great a job he's he's doing. And boy, do I have to agree with that. Because he got, I started to get on earlier and nothing happened. And he took over and he got me on and and for some reason also, I should say that the whole internet here was down, I guess, for a while at the start of the meeting. So that eliminated everything. But anyway, he got me back on and all of a sudden, the the computer decided it had to reboot. Again, Matthew got on and says, well, you know, I think I can stop it and get you back on and everything. Well, he finally did that. So I started in the meeting again. And the darn thing says, okay, now I got to reboot again. So again, Matthew comes on and starts doing what he can. And he finally just gave up and said, I can't like, I don't know what's going on. I can't do it. So so anyway, I I got it. I just want to say, Matthew, thanks for trying because he really did. I mean, he really worked to get me on and and I can hardly wait till next month when when maybe we can actually talk to each other and see each other and, you know, good things like that. So I'm really looking forward to it. The end.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Peterson. Heidi?
It was a very good meeting. I learned a lot. I think everyone's just doing an amazing job considering the pandemic. I remember last year being in Fort Lupton at the meeting and then we got the call that someone might have had covid. I mean, that was just the beginning of what a year it's been. But I'm so impressed with how everyone has kind of preserved the state of of Ames, you know, being professional and inclusive and welcoming and trying to support everyone. I'm just been really impressed. And I will say I am going to go get my first covid shot today at four o'clock, four thirty, excuse me, and hope to God my second with the march. And then I will be more than willing to come to a meeting. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Trustee Hou?
Yes, I will look forward to next month where we can all meet a little bit more in person. And I I do miss the contact. It's just, it's, it's, it's been a tough year for everybody. And you know, to only be down ten percent in enrollment and still still getting most of it done and learning some new ways how to get it done, which is going to be that will trickle down into our group as the years go by. And that's going to be exciting to see what, how this evolves. And again, everything that we do for the student, that's, that's our mission. You know, we're here to, that's what we're doing. Our students and our communities. And you can always play second fiddle. I was fortunate enough to pick my shot up at the beginning of February on the thirteenth, was scheduled to get my second tomorrow, or Friday, Saturday, but I think the weather is going to take charge of the facility. So I got postponed for a week, but on the second shot. And that's going to be we're all going to be through this by the end of the summer. We'll have a lot more surety with our health concerns regarding this this virus. It's been scary, but at the same time, we've all stayed strong and I'm proud of you all. And because it's, it's been a bit of a struggle, but everybody kept their chin up and did best practices, best management. But sooner or later, we're going to have to have a party make this happen. I I will feel very sad if we don't all get together to to wish Carol a congratulation. So we might want to figure out how to do that one and get the videographer working on that game plan there because I think she will appreciate having us all on board for that presentation. Other than that, thank you, Dr. B. Cabinet, again, great job. Appreciate the communication. Always, you know, come up with those, all those questions from time to time that might not have immediate finger point to, but thanks for trying always. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, trustee Hou. I guess that leaves me. Well, I think it was a great meeting. I agree with the with everyone else and we're, I think we're all getting or looking forward to getting together in person again. That's, we we miss that. Personal contact is huge. And over the last year, we've all come to, I think, appreciate how important that really is. How much we benefit from it. Great meeting, great reports by everybody. As always, I enjoyed the excellence at Ames to have someone like Jody come back to college after being out for that many years, come back and want to get an education at the games. I think it's just is just awesome. So great meeting. Thank you all for all you do. And look forward to the next meeting. Our hybrid one. And so that's, that's my comments. As far as evaluating the meeting, which we always do, it's, it's kind of hard to do, I guess, on these types of meetings. But I think we did a great job considering how these things go. So everybody did their part. We got Ray through it and appreciate Matt all his help, helping Ray out there. And it it worked well. So if there's nothing else.
Just one other thing. It's a little bit too late. But Ray, you should have drove down to Nun Telephone and borrowed a computer.
You're right. I should have done something, you know. I thought everything was fine and until just all of a sudden it went south on me. So
Okay, well, hopefully we'll see you in person next time.
Yes, I hope so too.
All right. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.